Namaste everyone, very warm welcome to this Astmi special Navratri special session. And if you can see me and hear me, type in the comments, happy Navratri, type in the comments, happy Navratri. Thank you, very warm welcome, good morning, good evening, good day, which part of the world you are from? Jai Mata Di. Good, 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 beautiful comments coming in. So thank you very much for joining in this session. Happy Navratri, wishing you all very happy Navratri. So today's session is an interesting one where we are going to explore a different type of perspective learning as well as experience. Which maybe I did not explore before and I did not attempt before personally. About the activity which we are going to do today, it's reading about the meaning of a book named Durga Sapta Shati. So what is Durga Sapta Shati? Durga Sapta Shati is a set of slokas of seven hundred slokas out of Markandaya Purana. Here there is a tale of Navadurgas and it's about defeating the demons Shumbe Nishumbhe and other demons. And it said reading this Durga Sapta Shati helps in clearing obstacles of our life's spiritual evolution. Gains more confidence, more happiness, more joy, more satisfaction blessings and boons for manifesting our dreams. And many, many other benefits as well. So first then they used to say, I used to wonder how come reading the Durga Sapta Shati book help us receive all these results? And second, how come reading story of the mother goddess defeating the army, defeating the weapons, defeating the monsters? Help us transform. So if you all remember, many of you have been explaining about a subject called epigenetics. How many of you remember that? As per epigenetics, there are genetic subject, then epigenetic subject. Twenty percent of the genes are fixed, eighty percent of the genes can be changed. Happy harmonious genes and negative harmonious genes. So negative genes develop when we criticize, complain or keep reading negative stuff, keep thinking negative stuff. Because of this negative genes are there which attract negative experiences. Then there are positive happy harmonious genes which develop when we read good ending stories, do good activities, express good stuff. Because of which happy harmonious genes develop within us which will attract positive happy situations into our life. So when we read the good ending stories of Durga Sapta Shati. We are continuously reading the success story, yes this weapon got destroyed, yes this demon got defeated. Yes, the situation transformed, yes the gods got happy. That reading and listening and experiencing itself develops a lot of happy harmonious genes. Which will in turn develop genes which are required to be more confident, powerful ability to take action and manifest the goals faster. So I, this is my understanding of scientific correlation of reading Durga Sapta Shati. And gaining the experience of transformation in our own life. So what is correlation useful, type useful everybody, if you felt this useful. So the significance of the story is whatever they are explaining. It shows the significance of the higher power or god surrendering to the higher power. It teaches us surrendering, surrenderness. It teaches us how to take action, how to be brave and bold in the situations which are challenging. How to deal in the difficult situation? When challenges come, when we go low, how to get activated mode? So this all information we gain from reading the Durga Sapta Shati book. And it said whenever you are facing challenges or obstacles, read this slokas, you will get great results. So we are, we are a different perspective of community, you agree? We don't go through the traditional approach sometimes. So we are not reading the slokas today. We are exploring the meaning, we are going to read the meaning to understand the meaning of each of the sloka. So as we get started, let's get started with a small invocation prayer and then take it forward. Bring your hands into namaste posture, near your heart chakra region, close your eyes. Let the smile descend on your face. Inhale. Exhale. Inhale. Exhale. Remember your favorite god, invoke their blessings. Remember Navadurgas. Lord Rama. Supreme Almighty. Divine father, divine mother, fountain and sources of all energies. To my spiritual teachers, to all the spiritual teachers, to all the holy gurus, holy masters, great avatars, great beings. To all the archangels, holy angels and spiritual helpers. To my mind, body and soul, we humbly invoke your blessings. For compassionate, purifying light, soothing healing energies. Thank you for blessing us with light, love, power. Your healing energies, spiritual energies, wonders energies. Thank you for your divine guidance and illumination. Thank you for your abundance and prosperity. May this session of the Durga Sapta Shati meaning help us clear obstacles in our life and take our life to the very next level. With lots of gratitude and respect, you may gently slowly open your eyes with a beautiful smile. Okay, as we begin this journey of Durga Sapta Shati, let's understand importance of Navratris. There are two types of Navratris. One Navratri which happens now, one Navratri happens in October and November. Can you share in the comments what are the two types of Navratris or what is the difference based on your perspective? There are different stories, different representations, different goddesses representations, different way of celebration. And unlimited number of cultures, different cultures, different experience, different learnings, different stories. So this Navratri what we are going through, it's called Chaitra Navratri. And tomorrow is celebrated as Ram Navami, day one of this Navratri was celebrated as Ugadi. So Vinith says October is Vidyarambha also. So Shobha says Chaitra Navratri means birth of Rama, okay? Sardia Navratri, okay, in Chaitra Navratri it's Masa. Saradia is the October-November Navratri and currently current one is Chaitra Navratri. So what's the main difference as per you? What? So tomorrow is the Ram Navami also, Ram Navami is celebrated. Why is Ram Navami celebrated? Share that also in the comments. Other during, yeah. So October-November what happens Navratri, it's celebrated as Dashera. So Mahisasura Mardini in October, Mahisasura was the evil, was the, was destroyed by goddess. So Nehal says Chaitra Navratri signifies the creation of universe and the beginning of the world of beginnings. Beautifully said Nehal, thank you very much for sharing that, very, very interesting. So it's birth of Rama in the Chaitra Navratri, coronation day of Rama. So it's birth of Rama or coronation both it's done. So Rajvi says there is Navratri celebrated in Ashada also, there are three Navratris we celebrate. Okay, yeah, I guess now I'm remembering, yes, there are three Navratris that are celebrated. So yes, different cultures, different learnings and the learning which we go through, it's never ending. Thank you for sharing. Okay, so today is Astmi, can you share the importance of Astmi? Why is Astmi celebrated? Why is Astmi one of the most auspicious days compared to other days as well and Navami also important? So as today we are going to do an auspicious process, purify yourself and be in this place. And if possible, after the puja, do some offering to goddess as prasad and you as a family consume it. Because we are doing inner world and outer world activity, transformation. If we are reading only the meaning maybe and experiencing the chanting. We are getting the metaphysical experiences and results. If we are offering the prasad also, we are getting physical experiences also. So after this entire reading of the meaning and stuff, you may offer prasad to your goddess and consume it. Okay, Navratri celebrated as victory of goddess Durga against demon Mahashasura, Ashwin Navratri, correct. Thank you, thank you everyone for sharing your valuable input and insights. So today as we start reading the meaning and understanding importance of the seven hundred slokas. And understand and transform. After every set of few slokas as I read the meaning, try to understand the story correlating with your life. If I say demon, who is the demon in your life? If I say god, are the gods with positive thoughts? If I say fear, where all do you have fear in your present life? If I say destruction, where all the destruction is needed in the present life? If I share some stories and at the end I ask the conclusion. Correlate the story in your life and try to understand where all you can implement the learnings of that story in your life. Like be more confident and brave and take action. In spite of falling down, wake up, take support of other people and create a environment so that victory can happen. Like that I want correlation of each of the story happening. So that when you type also you engrain at a deeper level and when you correlate also more transformation happens with you. So can I have the deal of this correlation perspective during the entire next couple of hours or more? I don't know how much it's going to take because I'm doing this for the first time reading of meaning altogether. And that might give a good transformation, type in the comments deal if you are with me in this. And we'll take small, small breaks maybe in between as I need to continuously read and I'll be learning from you all also. Thank you, thank you Anita, Vinith, Ramit, Datta, Nehal. Thank you very much for your lovely active participation. Thank you for waking up this early morning and being part of this session, not knowing what's going to happen. Okay, so let me adjust my systems. So I'm reading this book, Durga Sapta Shati. It has a Sanskrit to English translation. It's published by Pustaka Sansar. I guess it was not available on Amazon. I searched on Google, it took me some different websites, I don't remember now from which website. But this seems to be very good, every sloka, different meaning was given. So illustration of goddess photographs of different Navadurgas, their illustration and importance are explained. And lot of important information. We will be directly jumping to the part where we'll be starting the Durga Sapta Shati, the seven hundred slokas and verses. So every chapter is starting with a small mini meditation or visualization. And also it ends with the story or experience. So let me share this small prayer or a form of meditation. Which the chapter one of Durga Sapta Shati is beginning with. So this meditation or this sloka says Dhyanam. When god Vishnu was in mystic sleep amidst of the ocean, Reverend Brahma brought from the womb of lotus. Prayed the goddess Mahakali for the destruction of mighty demons Madhu and Kaitabha. I recall to pray the same goddess Mahakali. In her ten arms she holds sword, gear discus, club, arrow, bow, pariga. An ancient arm to the, an enacted by throwing, dentrod, bhushundi, the gun, skull. And the conch shell respectively. She has three eyes and in her all limbs heavenly ornaments exist, luminous like blue chen. She has ten faces and ten feet, we bow to the goddess Chandika. From within just bow to the goddess Chandika with this different representations. So summary of the chapter one of few set of slokas, about one hundred and five slokas are in the first chapter. So Rishi Markhande said the eighth Manu is called Savarni. Every time there are four yogas that, yah, Satyagva, Treta Yoga, Dwapar Yoga, Kale Yoga. So when this entire four yogas are together, I guess it's called Manavantara. I am sorry if there are some wrong meaning interpretation. Every Manavantara there is a manu, a head person. And every, every Manavantara the head person changes and different name it is represented with different name. So Rishi Markhande said the eighth Manu is called Savarni, the son of Surya and his wife Savarna. I shall bow now and relate to you how he came into being. Due to the grace of Mahamaya, that lord of Manavantara came to be the son of Surya. There was a king named Surata ruling over the world. He ruled his subjects like his own children. He was once attacked by his enemies to capture his city by force. He had a great fight with them. He was defeated in the battle by those wicked ministers and kings of the hostile enemy and was compelled to leave his domain. He felt extremely dejected and mounting onto the back of the horse of a great sage. And went to the dense forest all alone. There he saw an ashram of a great sage. There were many disciples in the ashram studying sacred lore. The king was received warmly by sage. The king felt attachment with the, with his lost kingdom. He thought within myself, how sad, up to this time I was ruling the country and now it is occupied by the enemy. My ministers were serving me faithfully and now they are serving my enemies. My subjects were happy during my rule, now I do not know how they are being treated. My treasury will become completely used by the enemies. Thus and other things did the king ponder over. So as I am reading the king's story, reflect this king's story with your own life. Where, where the ruling you were doing, where some situations came which occupied the situation. And you feel totally defeated and you've been contemplated, reflect in your life that way. So in that ashram, the king saw Vaishya, the trader. The king asked him, who are you? What are you doing here? Please tell me everything about you. The Vaishya said, my name is Samadhhi. I was born in a wealthy family but cast out by my own trusted kinsmen. I was deprived of all my property by wicked people of my neighborhood. All my family, wife and children deserted me. Due to poverty, I have taken shelter in this forest. I'm filled with grief. I do not know what has happened to my wife and what my children are doing now. Whether they are living or dead, I do not know. The king said, when your wife and children have deserted you, when you became penniless. Why then are you so much attached to them even now? Okay, I'm sorry, I'm back, there is some, there was some streaming interruption, I guess. If you can see me back, type in the comments, yes, type in the comments, yes. Sorry for the interruption. Thank you for staying back, thank you for continuing here. I hope this story reading is interesting and is the story reading interesting? Are you gaining some insights and correlating with you already? Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, so I'm using different software so some interruptions can happen. Thank you very much. Yes, learning and interesting. Longest reading of story I've ever seen, yeah, yes. So the point was, the Vaishya said, oh king, true, exactly is what you say, I also know it. But what to do, still I love them. The nature of mind is such, it loves even the wicked wife and the wicked children who have driven me out. I cannot help it. Then Rishi Markhande said, then they, then they bow, the king and the trader went to that sage who was residing in that ashram. They both prostrated before the sage and with great reverence the king questioned the sage. Oh reword sage, I wish to ask you one question. Oh sage, I have lost all my territory although I know that change is the law of nature. But still I feel great attachment for my lost kingdom, my wife, my children. Oh sage, why is this? This is a Vaishya who has been deserted by his kin, kith and kin. Due to his poverty and still he has great attachment for his wife and children. We both are filled with grief, we both are deluded, please satisfy us through your wisdom. Many people keep asking me, right, sir, why is this happening to we, why it's problems? And when the problems are still there, why I am still attaching to the results? Now the answer comes, the sage said, oh king, yes, there is that knowledge is with every, in every creature. Some animals are blind during the daytime, some are blind during the night. Some are of the same sight during the night and day. Man has the sight only during the day, yet all possess the same wisdom. Birds and animals have the same knowledge like human beings. Look at these birds, though they are hungry themselves, yet they are feeding grains to their younger ones. Look at the moths filling on the fire. Look at men falling in the fire of sensual subjects, objects. What difference is among creatures here in spite of intelligence? All creatures are struggling for the sake of belly. All are controlled and deluded by the great power, the Mahamaya of Vishnu. Due to her power of all this world is walking, due to her all the, due to her all are suffering. Due to her all are happy, there is no wonder in this. Even scholars are dragged by this Maya, by force and they are totally deluded. She is the creator of this universe, mobile and immobile. She brings peace and gives men the eternal salvation in the end. She is the cause of bondage and cause of liberation. She alone all in all, she rules the supreme over all lords. So the demons Madhu and Kaitabha. King Surata asked the sage, who is this goddess whom you are called Mahamaya lord? How did she arise and what are her feats, twice born one? Her grandeur, her nature, her origin, all this I want to hear from you, best of those who know the Veda. The sage answers, she is eternal and embodies creation, said the sage. The whole world is provided by her, but many fold are her origins and nevertheless. It is said that when she becomes manifest to accomplish the task of the gods, she is born in the world. She is also considered to be eternal. Hear now from me, her various manifestations. At the end of yawn when Vishnu had fallen into yogic sleep, stretched out on Sheshanaga. And the world was nothing but one vast ocean. Two dreadful demons called Madhu and Kaitabha arose from his earwax, from Vishnu's earwax when he was in yoga sleep. Arrows from them, bent on killing Brahma. Sitting on the lotus that had grown from Vishnu's navel. Brahma Prajapati saw the two fierce Ashuras appear while Janardhana last, last fell fast asleep. Janardhana means lots Vishnu himself. Single-minded, in concentration and with a steady fast heart, he praised in the meditative sleep. That lay upon Hari's eyes in order to awaken him. I exalt you blessed sleep by of Vishnu, of matchless splendor. Mistress of the universe, mother of the world who both preserves and destroys. Armed with sword, spear, mace and discus, carrying conch, bow and arrows. Bludgeon and Bhushundi. You are kind, gentler than all the gentle, utterly beautiful, supreme among both high and low. You are the goddess Supernal. You are the energy of every substance, no matter what, no matter where, existent or non-existent. Who am I to praise you? You who pour for the world. If the god who sustains and consumes the world has been mastered by sleep, who is left here to praise you? Since Vishnu, Isana and myself, I guess Isana means Lakshiva. And myself have been made by you to take bodily form. How can I offer you praise? In truth you are celebrated for your accelerated glory. Now bring the lord of creation Vishnu quickly back to consciousness. So he may destroy those two dangerous demons Madhu and Kaitabha. The dark goddess thus prayed by, praised by the creator in order to arouse Vishnu so that he might kill the two demons. Came forth from his eyes, mouth, nostrils, arms, heart and chest and stood before Brahma. Whose origin is hidden. Released by sleep, Janardhana Jagannada arose from his resting peace on the ocean. And saw the two evil nature demons Madhu and Kaitabha. Heroic and valorous, eyes red with rage, filled with eagerness to kill Brahma. Springing up, Lord Hari battled against the two of them for five thousand years with only his bare arms for weapons. Out of their pride and ignorance, they asked Lord Vishnu for a boon. Both of them said, we are pleased with you Valar. The lord said, both of you may die at my hand, at my hand, if you are also pleased, if you are so pleased. So Vishnu was fighting with the two demons and two demons were so happy with the fight. The demons asked Vishnu, ask me a boon. So Lord Vishnu said, both of you may die at my hands, at my hands, if you are so pleased with me. So seeing the whole earth full of water, the demons tactfully said, yes, you can kill us at a place where there is no water. Thereupon Vishnu put them both on his thighs. Immediately and within no time, the lord bearing conch, discus and mace. Killed these two demons by splitting open their heads and with discus. And in this manner was born the goddess prayed by Brahma himself. Listen now while I relate to the mystery of this goddess. Here in the first chapter, the slaying of Madhu and Kaitabha of Devi Mahatmaya in Markandaya Purana during the period of Savarni. So here we come to the end of day one chapter. So share in the comments, what are the emotions you gain? What is the learning or insight you receive by this sharing of experiences in the Purana? So share in the comments. So could you learn more of confidence, could you learn about surrenderness? Could you learn that there is something more beyond or you learned about how goddess came into a reality? What was the benefit of you understanding the destructions of Madhu and Kaitabha? Could you learn some insight that Lord Vishnu kept on their thighs and tear them up? Sometimes we feel it's impossible, right? Madhu and Kaitabha said, when on water, we should not be killed on water, so kill in some other way. So what did you learn? Share your in the comments. What is the emotion you gain, what is the sense of learning you have experienced? Is it confidence, is it surrenderness, is it thinking out of the box? Yes, thank you. Is it thinking out of the box? So my personal learning was not stopping yourself whenever challenges come, think out of the box, there are challenges. Yes, surrender and kill our ego, beautifully said Sparupa, thank you for sharing. What else? Surrender, evil also is part of us, we need to control too, absolutely well said. Evil came from Vishnu's earwax. Perseverance always pays off. Very good. Kill the ego, kill our own demons. How to come out of attachment from the people who do not value us? Regain strength. Thank you, beautiful sharings everyone, beautiful, beautiful, keep it coming. Regaining strength from us inside. We are our own masters, controlling the sadaripus, okay? Thank you. So those who have been reading Durga Shaktisati, reading this meaning, is this useful for you? And are you getting little bit new perspective now onwards? Thank you. Oversmartness does not help kill our ego. Yes, Pramila, oversmartness of giving the boon to our own enemy and again receiving the destruction. All that is oversmartness and ego game. Be balanced and avoid duality, well said. Thank you, Mina. Thank you. So now we are going to enter into the chapter two. Uh, chapter two, where there is a small meditation again. Like in the chapter one, we read about the meditation about goddess got created and how she looks. Let's understand the representation of goddess in the chapter two as well. So as I read this, the small meditation part, close your eyes, listen and experience. Monica Tanija says, can you please chant in Hindi for more connectivity while doing this part? Monica, if I keep doing this, it will go on entire day and I am not fluent in reading the Sanskrit slokas. What I would recommend is, Durga Shaktisati is available on internet also. You can open the and and keep the slokas along with you. Here today in this session, we are reading the meaning. So are you ready already for the chapter two? Tap in the comments, chapter two. Type in the comments, chapter two. Thank you. So as we are getting for ready for chapter two. Uh, we'll start with a small meditation on goddess. Close your eyes. I meditate upon the goddess Bhagavati Mahalakshmi, who is information of happiness. And is placed in the seat of lotus. She is rosary of this celestial fruit Rudraksha. Axe with circular blade, club, arrow, thunderbolt. Lotus, circular circular line, stick, weapon of power. Sword, shield, conch, plate bell. Vessel of spiritual liquor pike, trident, fetter and geared discus. So this is the visualization of mother goddess as we start the chapter two. So as we start the chapter two, understanding the meaning and summary, let's jump into the summary part. And understand meaning of all the slokas. So here there are about sixty nine slokas, let's understand the meaning. So the origin of goddess from the gods. Once long ago, there was a battle between the gods and demons that lasted a hundred years. In which Mahisha was the leader of the Ashuras and Indra, sacred of the cities. Was the chief of gods. In this contest. The army of the gods was defeated by the more powerful demons. When Mahisha had conquered all the gods, he became their leader. So the gods utterly defeated, put the lotus-born Prajapati before them. And went to Shiva and Vishnu, the god whose banner bears garuda. In the dwelling place of these two deities, the thirty gods related at length. The exploit of Mahisha and their own defeats. We hear about Mahisha Sura Mardini, right? I guess that's the story we are coming into, about the Mahisha who conquered the world and the gods. So Mahisha himself has taken charge of the offices of Surya, Indra, Agni, Vayu, Yama. Varuna and other gods. All the hosts of gods have been expelled from heaven by this evil soul demon. And have spread all over the earth like mortals. You have been told all about this struggle. Against the enemy of the gods, now we have come to you for protection. Let us plot his destruction. When they heard the speech of the gods, Madhusudana and Shambhu, means Vishnu and Lakshmi grew angry. Their bows knitted in fronds, pure energy blazed forth from the discus bearer mouth. As he filled with rage and from Brahma and Shankara as well. From the bodies of Indra and other gods too emerged great tejas and all their energies united into one. As the gods witnessed this very crest of energy pervading all the directions. And blazing forth like a mountain, peak of flame with the sun. This matchless energy that sprang from the bodies of all gods. Its light illuminating the three worlds become concentrated in one spot and took form as the goddess. Her mouth was born from the energy that arose from Shambhu. From Yama's energy came the hair of her head. And from Vishnu's, her arms. From the energy of moon were born her two breasts, from Indra's her waist. From Varuna's energy came her claves and thighs. From energy itself, her genitals. From the energy of Brahma arose her feet. Her toes from the, her toes from the sons. From the vasus came her fingers and hands and her nostrils from kuberas. Her teeth sprang from the energy of Prajapati and her three eyes from that of fire. From the energy of two twilights came her eyebrows and her ears from the winds. In this manner was the goddess Shiva born, goddess Shiva born from the tejas of other gods. When the immortals who were tormented by Mahisha saw this goddess. Emerging from the energy of all the gods combined, they all rejoiced and all gave her their own weapons. Crying aloud, victory, victory, our leaders will be victorious by the tejas. The pinaka bearer gave her a trident which was drawn from out of his own weapon. While Krishna gave her discus severed from his own. Varuna gave the conch to her. The oblation eating fire, his spear. The wind gave her a bow and two covers full of arrows. Producing a thunderbolt from his own thunderbolt. Indra, lord of gods, gave it to her. This thousand-eyed god also gave her the bell from his elephant, Hiraavata. Yama gave her this staff and his staff, Yama gave her a staff from his staff of time. Varun, lord of waters, gave her nose. Prajapati, a necklace of beads and Brahma a water jar. Sun put his own race into the pores of her skin and time gave her his sword. And shining shield. The milk ocean bestowed on her a shining necklace. Two never fading garments, a celestial crown jewel with a pair of earrings. And upper arm bracelets, a lustrous half moon. Bangles for all her arms, a pair of bright anklets and jeweled rings for all her fingers and toes. Vishvakarman gave her an immaculate axe. Impentable armor and all manner of weapons. The ocean placed on her head and breast an incomparable comparable breadth of undecaying lotuses. And put in her hand, a beautiful lotus flower. Hemawath gave her the lion for her mount and an abundance of jewels. Kubera, lord of wealth, gave her a goblet full of wine. And the Seisha, lord of snakes, who supports this earth, gave her a necklace of snakes. Started with large chips. How many of you are loving this explanation from different gods cuffing different weapons and formation of the body? You can visualize it's like formation of your own body, so it's a beautiful explanation. The goddess thus was honored by the other gods with ornaments and weapons. Roared aloud ebullently, cackling again and again with demonic laughter. The whole sky was filled with her hideous cries. As her monstrous bellow reverberated forth, all the world shook. All the worlds shook, the oceans trembled and the mountains quaked. While the joyful gods cried out victory to the goddess who rides on the land. And seers praised her too, their heads bowed down to her with devotion. When they saw the three worlds shaking, the force of the gods who had re- readied their armies sprang up. Their weapons raised aloft. Aha, aho, what is this? Cried the demon Mahisha. Accompanied by all the Ashuras, he rushed in fury towards the sound. Then he saw the goddess pervading the three worlds with her splendor. While the earth sank under her feet and her crown tower above the sky. Shaking the whole nether world with his of her bowstring. Like the bow is there string is stringed and the vibration comes about that. Filling the universe in all direction with the with her thousand arms. Between this goddess and enemies of the gods, a battle was joined spanning the blazing the direct. The blazing directions with all manner of striking and throwing weapons. The war between the gods and demons started. The great demon called Chixus, leader of Mahisha's army, did battle with the gods. As did Chamara accompanied by fourfold army, the mighty demon Udagra. Fought with sixty thousand chariots. Mahajanu, the big jaw, battled with million. Asiloma means the one with sword hair, fought with fifty million. And Baskala entered the fray with six million soldiers. With vast multitudes of elephants and horses. Ugradarshna means the terrible sight. Fought in that conflict accompanied by a million chariots. And the mighty Daitya called Bedala, Bedala means the cat. Battle in that war surrounded by half million chariots. While the demon Kala, Kala means time, was accompanied by as many as five million. Then Myriads of other great Ashura with their chariots, elephants, horses. Fought in that battle with the goddess and Mahisha Sura was encircled in the conflict. By thousands of millions of chariots, elephants and horses. They fought against the goddess with the lances, sling, mighty club. Swords, axes and three-blade pikes, some flung spears. Other noses with blows of sword, the demons went forth to kill the goddess. But this goddess Chandika raining down her own striking and throwing weapons. Cut down those of her enemy as if in a play. Her face serene and praised by the seers, the goddess thrust her striking. And throwing weapons into the bodies of demons. The lion mount of the goddess, his mane shaking with fury. Moved through the Ashura army like fire through a wood. And Ambika's nods as she struggled on the battlefield became troops in the battle. She exiled them by hundreds of thousands. They fought with axes, with slings, with three-bladed pikes. Sustained by the power of the goddess, they annihilated the demons. Some of her troops sounded war drums and other blew conches. While still others beat the small drums in the grand celebration of the war. Then the goddess with her trident, club and showers of spears with swords and other weapons. Destroyed the demons by hundreds. Some confused by the ringing of her bell were felled by the goddess with her trident, club and shores of arrows. Others she lassoed with her nose and dragged along the ground. Some were split into two by blow of her sharp sword, while others pulverized by her attack. And still others lay felled by her club on the earth. Some of that enemy horses vomited blood after being hammered by her club. Others fell on the ground, pierced in the chest by the her trident. So as this explanation is happening, imagine all the pains and discomforts, all your emotions, whatever you are going through. Is being pierced out and being destroyed in your system, all your challenges, all your problems. The mountain-like tormentors tormentors of the thirty gods huddled together on the battlefield. Overcame by shower of arrows, gave up their lives. Some of those mighty demons, some whose arms were cut off, other whose necks were severed. Some who were decapitated, others cut it in two at the waist. And still others with legs disembumbled, fell on the ground. But some who had been clawed in two by the goddess, each half bearing one arm, one eye, one foot. And others who had lost their heads rose up again. These headless trunks, still grasping their fine weapons, battled against the against the goddess. Other dead bodies were also dancing on the battlefield. Keeping time to the rhythm of the musical instruments. Headless corpses holding the swords, speared, spears and lances in their hands shouted out. Stand still, stand still to the goddess. Other demons with limbs torn off made a shudder go throughout the host. The earth became unfit to walk on, where the furious battle raged because of the vast rivers of blood. From the failed elephants, horses. And demons that flowed through the middle of the Ashuras. Ashura forces. Ambika sent that mighty demon army to predation in a flash. Just a fire consumes a heap of grass and food. And the lion roaring aloud, shaking his mane, plucked the life breath from the bodies of enemies of gods. After that battle between the great demons and the goddess, with her troops, the gods in heaven praised her. Raining down showers of flowers. In this next chapter is learned the sage made or relate the death of Mahisha Sura. The buffalo demon at the hand of goddess. So here we end the chapter two, which says, called slaughter of the armies of Mahisha Sura. The Devi Mahatmaya in Markandaya Purana during the period of Savarani the morning. So here we come to the chapter two and share in the comments, what were your insights? What were your learnings? What kind of emotions triggered in you? While you were listening to this story or tale? Could you feel something being destroyed within you? Could you correlate the demons, the time Kala, the fierce eyes, the brain, the emotions? At the Ashuras and their army, as the challenges or problems in your life? Share in the comments, what is the perspective you could gain through the conversation we just had? Did it develop some sense of confidence and power when you felt the formation of goddess happening? Could you enjoy the feeling, yes, the weapons being created? All that being correlated with life? Everyone keep having some water and with water when you are consuming. Uh, feel this story more digesting in better way as water also has memory. Okay, good. So we have beautiful Madras saying. I felt some traumas releasing, how many of you felt something being detoxified from your system? Something get healed, getting healed. Everyone share your perspective and learning, that's how we can imbibe the learning set a better way. What else? What is your perspective? What did you gain? What did you feel? It says feeling healed. To succeed in life, we must first kill the internal demons such as fear, grudge and all negative emotions. Very beautifully put, Shalaja. Thank you for sharing. Very beautifully put, Shalaja. Thank you for sharing. Then Pramila says negative emotions to be destroyed. Very good. Swarupa says feeling, the feeling while goddess was created, the right side of my body was goosebumps. Obstacles came and the outcome of the obstacles for was good. I felt peaceful and relaxed. Strength and support of Satsangar community. Very good Ravindra. Thank you. Wonderful to hear the beautiful creation of the merciful and the power of divine power. Thank Divine Mother. Thank you for sharing Ajay. Beautiful. Kill native emo- emotions. Thank you. Great. So different people, different learnings, different perspective. And the importance of typing is when you type it, it becomes like a good ending story. All other people are also reading your good ending story because of which more happy harmonious genes develop in your body. There is a beautiful quote by Sri Ramakrishna. The cat catches her kitten with her teeth and they are not hurt. But when a mouse is so scot, it dies. Thus Maya never kills the devotee though it destroys others. Isn't this so beautiful? How many of you love this example? Type in the comments. I love it. Every part of our body is blessed by various devata need to respect. War is part of life but then also celebrate, stay focused, felt healing is going in continuously. Very good Asian centers. Thank you. With cooperation we can achieve anything. Goddess is within every one of us. Beautiful. So consider the Mahamaya as your mother. Like cat holds the kitten with her mouth but doesn't get killed. But when cat holds the rat, the rat gets killed. So with Mahamaya surrenderness or something which is beyond us, which is pervading over the existence. It will help us to be in awareness mode. So Pritika gives a beautiful explanation here. So Pritika says vivid description of the extent of the infinite power of the goddess. A fusion of all god energy and the ability to destroy any degree of obstacles and challenges. A feeling I can do anything. How many of you are feeling I can achieve anything now? Yeah? Shalaja says in life the demons keep appearing and we must always take the avatar. Of Martini to overcome obstacles. Very good. Well said, Shalaja. Nice sharing. Thank you everyone for sharing this lovely sharing. Now let's enter into the chapter three. Beginning with the meditation, everyone may close your eyes and pray this form of goddess. The radiant body of mother of universe is magnificent like the rising of thousand suns. Draped in the gl- blood-colored sari, her neck is adorned with the garland of skulls. Her breasts are painted with red sandal paste. In her lotus-like hand, she holds a rosary. The other three hands showing postures of knowledge, fearlessness and granting of boon. These four aspects. Her bird-like face is incubed and glorified by three eyes. On the forehead is the place the jewell stirred with crown along with the moon. She is resting upon the seat of lotus. To such a goddess, I with devotional mind bow my head. So here is the prayer and small meditation related to goddess as we begin the chapter three. So the ta- chapter three, the saint begin to speak. The learned saint spoke thus, this destruction of demons army made their commander in chief. Chikshur furious and he confronted the goddess Ambika in great anger. This demon started showering weapons like anything. Just a second and yeah. So this this chapter, the third chapter, it's called the death of Mahisha, the buffalo demon. So the Mahisha itself is being killed here. When his army was being destroyed in this manner, the demon Mahisha himself in the form of buffalo. Terrorized the troops of the goddess. Some of them he bared with his snout, others tempered with his hoofs. Still others. Okay, there is some difference I guess. Just a second. Okay, I'll directly uh read the. Meaning of sloka one by one so that we do not miss out anything maybe. The destruction of the demons army made their commander in chief Chikshur furious. And he confronted the goddess Ambika with anger. The demon started showering his arrows like a rainfall to the summit of Mount Sumuru. As it covered by heavy clumps. Thereafter the goddess with her multitude of arrows countered the arrows of the demon. Easily and killed his horses and charioteer. Simultaneously, she cut his exceedingly high flag and the bow. Having cut his bow, she pierced his entire body with her arrows. After losing his bow, chariot, horses and the charioteered, the demon jumped towards the goddess. With his sword and shield. With his sharp sword, he hit the forehead of the lion. And attacked with the blow on the left arm of the goddess with speed and a vital force. Oh, oh king, when the sword touched her body, it broke into pieces. Finding his attack fruitless, that demon took the trident with his eyes in red anger. Thereafter the mighty demon threw this trident on Badrakali goddess. That trident glared like the sunlight falling down from the celestial sphere with dazzling lustre. Seeing the trident approaching towards her. The goddess too encountered it with the trident that shattered his weapons into hundreds of pieces. And also the demon himself. The mighty commander in chief of Mahisasura's army Chikshur having been killed. And another general named Chamar came to fight. Mounted on an elephant, he was afflictor of gods. Coming atop, he attacked the goddess with Shakti. But Jagadambika at the same moment wounded him. Made him ineffective by the fundamental voice Hungkara, hum. Thus he fell on the ground. Find his finding his Shakti broken and fallen Chamara became extremely furious. Being so angry, he attacked with his trident. But the goddess cut the trident wi- with her arrows. In the meantime, the lion of the goddess jumped onto the forehead of the elephant. And engaged itself in a hand-to-hand fight with the demon. Both of them fought and fell on the ground and extremely furious. The duo began their fierce fight with mighty attacks and counterattacks. Thereafter, the lion of the goddess made a very high jump towards the sky. And while coming down, sleeved the head of Chamor by his piercing claws. Likewise demon Udagra was killed by the goddess in the war with stones and trees. And the demon Karala too fell on the ground being hit by the teeth, fists and slaps. The Nemanmuddhat was completely reduced to powder with hampers of club of the goddess. With her dart she killed Bhaskal and through arrows Tamra and Adhaka. Three-eyed Parameshwari killed the demons named Ugrasaya, Ugravirya and Mahanu. Mahahano also with trident. The demon Vidal was beheaded by her sword. The Nemanmind named Durdhara and Durmukh. Both were trapped in arrows and sent to the aboard of death. In this way, when Mahisasura saw the decline of his army. He disguised himself in the form of a bison and started torturing the devotees and troops of the goddess. Some were attacked by a blow of his muscle, some by stamping his hoofs. Some by lashes of tail and others were ripped to shred and his horns. Some by mere momentum, the bellow and bellowing. Some by centrifugal rounds and also by the gas of his panting breath. That Mahisasura laid flat on ground many troops of the goddess. In this way, he shattered the army of goddess and rushed with wailer to kill her lion. At this Amba- Amba, sorry, at this Ambika become enraged. The mighty demon Mahisasura too became furious and started digging the ground by his hoofs. In the shape of wild buffalo whose pondered the earth. Smashed the lofty mountains with his horns and bellowing aloud. With his gallant and imporious movements, the earth disintegrated and lashed by his tail. The sea overflowed all around. Pierced by his swaying horns, the clouds burst into fragments. Mountains tremble by hundreds from the sky. Stuck down by the wind of this knotting breath. The mighty demon advanced, glancing towards Devi Chandika in order to kill her. Devi Chandika too expressed her wrath in order to slay him. She flung her nose over him and lassoed that that great demon. Having found himself encompassing that king of demons, two gave up his disguise as bison. At once, that demon changed himself and became a lion confronting her. While Ambika wanted to pierce his head, suddenly he appeared as a man with the sword. As soon as goddess chopped off that man along with his sword and shield, the demon became huge elephant. As such that mighty elephant with a roar started pulling and dragging the goddess. With his trunk. While he was pulling the lion, the goddess cut off his trunk with sword. Thereafter, that mighty demon resumed his previous form of bison like buffalo. And like before started terrorizing the entire universe along with movable and immovable creatures. Provoked by this, Chandika, mother of the world, guzzled her supreme liquor frequently. Laughing and red-eyed. That buffalo demon puffed up with pride in his own strength. Baloned, balowed and tossed mountains on Chandika with his horns. And she pulverized those mountains, huddled at her with arrows. Now the goddess full of anger, her mouth red with liquor, cried out to him in flurried words. Growl, roar and bellow, oh fool. But only as long as I drink this divine liquor. In a moment the gods will be howling at you when you die by my hands. Saying so, the goddess jumped and pressed him on the neck with her foot. And pierced the throat with her spear. Crushed under foot, finding himself helpless. That Mahisasura started emerging through buffalo's mouth in his real form. As he emerged only halfway, the goddess stopped him with her wailer. That semi-demon almost halfway out his mouth, still started fighting with the goddess. Then the goddess cut off his head with her lengthy sword. As soon as Mahisasura died, the entire army of demons retreated and ran away. Carrying in consternation. And all the gods were extremely pleased. The gods with along with the divine saints, sages, hermit prayed the goddess Durga. King of Gandharva's being utterly pleased, started singing and damsels started dancing. Along with all the creatures. Here ends the third chapter called The Slaying of Mahisasura. Of Devi Mahatma in Markandaya Purana during the period of Savani the Manu. So here we end the Mahisasura Marthini. So share in the comments, how are you feeling with Mahisasura Marthini story? Listening to the story of Mahisasura running around destroying and the mother goddess coming back again and again killing. How was the feeling within you with this fierce battle? Good. It's an interesting story with detailed explanation. When we come to sloka by sloka, it's a day. Swarupa says it's wow and like goosebumps and not stopping. How many of you felt the goosebumps? Type in the comments goosebumps. Too much different directions like a movie direction happening, right? Yeah, Neel says feeling powerful. Very good. How are you feeling within? Share in the comments. Feeling little afraid. Okay, some fears, suppressed fears are coming out maybe. Good. Feeling goosebumps, feeling powerful. How much ever the evil may try to overcome the divine, they cannot survive in the front of divine power. Beautifully said. Beautiful, beautiful. What else? What could you experience? What could you feel? It is a wow goosebumps in the story. Feeling the Shakti of, feeling the energy of Ma Shakti. Good. Thank you for sharing. Okay. Yet to come out of story. Oh my God. Immersing themselves in the story, yeah. Feeling strength. Good. One hour almost has been passed. So let's take a small break. Of maybe it's seven seven, we'll resume at seven seventeen, seven fifteen in next. Uh eight minutes and then take it further. Uh Shalaja says here the Desika, the Desi comes back wearing the skulls. And which depicts that we must never forget the fears and failures, they always remind when we overcame the success. The way you are reading and explaining, we can visualize each event like. Thank you. Thank you Neel for sharing. Great. So let's resume at seven fifteen. I guess this will go on for couple of more hours. We are just at chapter three. There are about thirteen fourteen chapters I guess. See you in seven minutes. All right, everybody, if you are back, type in the comments, I am back. Thank you for joining in before time and on time, sorry for the delays. So now let's get started with the chapter four. With this my uh Mahishasura Mardini, which we completed chapter three, we'll come come to the chapter four. It starts with the prayer to the goddess and meditation towards the goddess. Again, you can close your eyes and just experience this meditation about the goddess. The goddess who is surrounded by gods on all the four sides. The humans curious to serve and salomonize her in order to gain relation, realizations. That Durga Devi named Jaya, the victory is worthy of worship. The color of her limbs is black like black clouds. Merely by her glance, the multitude of enemies become fearful. Her forehead is decorated with an armored lunar line. Her hands are glorified with corn shell, gay discus, sword, trident, etc. This trined eye goddess is riding upon the shoulder of a lion. And her tri- radiant illumination has completely filled up the three worlds. Keeping your eyes closed, continuing this visual, just reflect back what you heard last one hour, last three chapters. What were your key learnings, key takeaways, key experiences? Which make you go through different emotions, di- different sensations. Which inspired you, which created fear in you, which created joy in you. Just remember those emotions, feel them one by one. Now we'll get started with the next chapter, the fourth chapter. So it's the praises of uh the gods and receiving the boons from goddess. So when the Mahishasura was killed, all the gods with Brahma as their heads came to the Devi. And praised her with these words. Who has the soul of all the worlds, worlds and all the pervading powers sustains all to that Ambika. Worshipped by the sages and the gods, we offer our prostrations. May she bestows kindness on us all, who death, whose death, whose depth. Cannot be reached by Brahma, Vishnu and Shiva. To that Chandika, now bu- mother of worlds, we offer our devoted prayers. Who is prosperity in the houses of the good, who is also destroying the poverty in the houses of the wicked. Who is wicked mind in the hearts of the sinner, to the thee, oh goddess, we offer our daily devotional salutations. Just for a reminder, as I share this prayer by the gods for the goddess. Feel as if you are doing the prayer to the goddess or the supreme creator. Oh goddess, how can we praise you? You are the cause of all the worlds, intrinsic nature and all pervading essence. You are moksha, you are vitya, which gives moksha. You are three Vedas, Rik, Yajur and Sama, you are the destroyer of sorrow. Oh goddess, goddess, you are intelligence, you are the essence of all scriptures. You are Durga. Who is the boat to cross the ocean of the world. You are Gauri, you are Lakshmi, you are Saraswati. Oh, how beautiful, but how dreadful you are. Glory, glory, glory to the goddess. Glory to the tea, indeed, fortunate are those devotees on whom your full grace descends at all the times. What else do they want? By mere remembrance, oh Durga, you give salvation to the devoted. You destroy their fear, give good intellect in them. And remove their poverty. You are so merciful, oh goddess, with the idea of giving good life in heaven to those enemies. You have destroyed the demons with your own hands. Oh Devi, why do you take such a time? Why can't you reduce them all to ashes to in the twinkling of an eye? Salutations, salutations to the tea, oh goddess. You have destroyed the troublesome evils and brought peace to the world. What glorious deed can there be positively possibly be? Protect us, oh protect us from all sides by brandishing and rotating your trident. Oh goddess, oh mother of universe, protect us everywhere with your sword, spear. Club and other weapons, be held in your sprout like soft hands. Feel like shield forming around you, thus praised by the gods and worshipped by them with all the sixteen methods. The goddess said with a smiling face, ask from me and any boon, I shall give that to you all. The god said, there is nothing which you have not done, for our sake. You have killed Mahishasura. If you would give us a boon, then may you come and destroy our troubles whenever we remember and call you. May whoever praise with these hymns prosper in all ways. The sage said, thus being offered praise by the gods, the goddess said, be it so, so be it. And vanished from the sight. So Saint Mehta said, thus I have told you the story of great glory of Devi, who is loving, mother of all worlds. Again, she was born through the body of Gauri in order to kill Shumba Nishumb. To restore righteousness to earth and help the gods. Hear from this story. So here we come to the end of chapter four, which called the praises of Sakura and the gods, other gods. In of Devi Mahatya of Markandaya Purana during the period of Savarni the Manu. So how many of you feel that you got a good protection prayer, good protection prayer? Could you feel some protection establishing? Share in the comments, what feelings or emotions could you experience as this was being read? And while reading this, could you feel as if you are praying for this protection to happen? Yes, it's our inner strength, very good. Could you feel some strength evolving? Could you feel the boon of protection coming towards you? Share in the comments. Now we are going to enter into the fifth chapter. There are many, many slogans, so the fifth chapter has almost one hundred and twenty-nine slogans. So as we are keeping on reading, in the beginning we got the understanding. How to face the challenges or obstacles, how to destroy, how to keep coming back. Now kind of protection we have learned. Yes, Anupam says protection and inner strength. So share in the comments, could you feel the protection and inner strength, the prayer is making it effective? Yes, Devima is always like a shield. Ajay says, what an assurance that she is always available, how many of you felt that? She is always available for us, all we need to do is invoke her. And she is always present for us, yes, it's like an invocation prayer, whenever you face challenge invoke. I felt as if my Durga taking, talking to me and offering me the boon, very good Deepali. Protection and inner strength, lovely. Thank you, thank you everyone for sharing. She is always available for us. Now let's get started with chapter five with the small meditation, close your eyes to visualize the goddess. The goddess whose lotus-like hands are adorned with plate bell like comb. Trident, plough, conch shell, pastel, gay discus and bow arrow. The halo of those body is beautiful like moon of autumn. And who is the support of the three worlds and the destroyers of Shumba Nishumb, etc. That goddess Mahisha- Mahasaraswati, who evolved from the body of Gauri. I constantly remember and meditate upon her. So this chapter name is called Devi's Conversation with the Messenger. So let's begin the meaning of chapter five. In olden days, the demons Shum and Nishumb, due to the power of the boon of Brahma obtained by them. Became the overlords of all the worlds. They controlled and the position of Surya, Yama, Varuna, Agni and all other gods. They began to do the work of wind even and so there was no work for the gods who were forcibly driven out of their posts. The Asuras began to tease the inhabitants of three worlds. And there was great unrest everywhere. The gods became very much dejected at heart and prayed the goddess. Prayed the goddess. So, one minute. The gods became very much dejected. Yeah, the gods become very much dejected at heart and prayed the goddess. Who had promised that them that she would come to their help. Whenever they were in need or in trouble and whenever they thought of her with devotion. Remembering this fact, all the gods retreated to Himavan. And there they offered a sincere prayer to the great goddess Vishnumaya. So Vishnumaya is Lord Vishnu while resting in the milk ocean, got himself under the influence of mystic sleep. Caused by the great goddess. So the gods offered the salutation to the goddess and worshipped her in different ways. They continued to praise her with, praise her for a long period. Then came Shiva's consort Parvati who overheard them. The sage said, just then Parvati was coming there for her daily path in the Ganga. She saw the gods there, offering their prayers and asked them to whom they were praying with such grief and anxiety. When she saw Chen, she was talking like this, there instantaneously came out of her body. A marvelous figure and inexpressible splendor and told Parvati thus. These gods have been defeated by Shumba and Nishumba. They are praying to me for my help. I am Durga, the power of this world. As she came out of the kosha, the body of Parvati. She has been called Kausiki. The gods were glad to see the glorious goddess coming to their safety and all saluted her with poor heads. Go ye all, oh gods, I shall see to the matter, said the glorious mother. The gods returned from the place and the great goddess stationed herself at the Himavath mountains. Just then there came by chance Chanda and Munda. Bodyguards of Shumba and Nishumba. Loitering in the Himalayan forest, they saw the extremely beautiful woman sitting there. And were enchanted by her glamour of youth. They immediately ran to their lord Shumba and told us. Oh lord, there is a wonderful thing in Himalayas. No one can explain that wonder. There is an extremely beautiful woman and compared to her, all your queens are mere worms only. All your wealth is nothing, your kingdom is nothing, your pride is nothing. She is more than all this. Go there and bring her. She is real wealth. She is illuminating the whole of the Himalayas. She is the gem among all celestial women. Oh king of demons, you should at once see her in person. Oh emperor, you have vanquished Indra, bought the Ayaravata, the Parijata, Uchcheresvara. Pushpakka and all wealth of the three worlds. You have bought the lunar nectar, the Somarasa and Mahapadmanidhi, the Mala. Ala- Amalapanakanja, Amalapankaja, the garland of non-fading lotuses. And this celestial umbrella decked with golden gems. You have snatched away the power of Brahma, the news of Varuna, the brilliance of Agni. You have bought everything, but you have not got the essence of all these. And that essence in this marvelously beautifully move my woman in the Himalayas. The sage said, hearing these words of Chandan Munda, Shumba sent his ambassador Sugriwa. To entice the celestial Durga to become the queen of Shumba. Sugriwa made haste towards the location of this celestial woman in Himalayas. With great excitement and anxiety and seeing her sporting in the Himalayan woods. Addressing her thus in sweet words. Oh Devi, Shumba, the lord of demons is, is the lord of the three worlds. I am his ambassador, sent by him to you. He has sent to you this message through me. All these thee worlds are mine. I have subdued the gods. I am enjoying all sacrificial offerings. All the wealth of the worlds is mine. I am the Indra of all. I have vanquished the lord of the oceans and have snatched away his wealth. Whatever wealth there is among Gandharvas, Devas, Nagas, Siddhas. Charnas, all are with me. They are mine. I believe you are the most beautiful of all celestial women. Please come to me. For I am the lord of all wealth, all prosperity. You may marry either myself or my brother Nishumbh. Who is equally wealthy and powerful. You will then attain the lordship of all these worlds. Think over and tell me quickly. Then the sage said, hearing these words of Sugriwa, the universal mother, the support of all the worlds. The blessed divine goddess told the ambassador Sugriwa in this curt and deep meaning words with slight smile. Yes, you are telling the truth. There is no doubt in this. Shumba is the lord of the three worlds and Nishumba is equal to him. What what to do? Through ignorance, I have taken a vow. How can I override it? Whoever conquers me in battles, whoever subdues my pride, whoever is a match for me in power. He should become my husband. Let there therefore Shumba or Nishumbh come here and subdue me. And there then very easily obtain my hands. The messenger said, oh goddess, you are mistaken. Who in all these worlds is bold enough to face the terrible Shumba and Nishumba? All these countless gods and their associates have been crushed by the power of Shumba and Nishumba. And what are you? A single powerless young woman? If the terrible Indra was humiliated in the battle, what are you? An inexperienced girl? Come with me to the place of Shumba and Nishumba. Otherwise you will shortly witness yourself being dragged by the force. Through your hair like a pie shable victim. The goddess replied, I agree that Shumba and Nishumba are mighty enough, but I cannot break an unwise vow. Taken by me long ago. You go and tell your masters to do as they deem fit. Here ends the fifth chapter called Devi's Conversation with Messenger. So how are you feeling as we complete the chapter? When we read what all wealth are available across the world. The Somarasa, the umbrella of jewels, the Bajma garland. Of unlimited flowers which does not shatter. And how did you feel the praise of the goddess, their own creator? So Doctor Girish says, experiencing, experiencing the goddess presence now. How many of you can feel some presence of some higher energy around you? Feeling something different, feeling some different vibrance. Just by appreciating the God or appreciating the worldly nature. Share in the comments. So, yes, C D Saranjiv says me, many of you commenting me. Thank you. Type, type in the comments me, type in the comments. Yes, feeling a different energy, feeling a different vibe. Thank you for sharing. So now we are going to enter into the sixth chapter. The sixth chapter to raise your vibrations. Are you ready for the fierce battle of Shimbanishambor and his army? And feel that battle happening within you to stop them. Never felt such peace. How many of you are feeling peaceful? Type in the comments peaceful. Some of you might not be aware also, okay, you are feeling peaceful. I am feeling the presence of goddess, feeling the strength. Subba says, feeling the beauty and strength of the goddess. Thank you. Thank you very much. Shalini says, Pooz Babs. Okay, now we come to the sixth chapter. Let's start with the small meditation towards invoking the goddess. You can close your eyes and go through the meditation visualizing the higher power goddess. I worship the accelerated supreme goddess Patmavati, who resides in the lap of omnipotent god Bhairava. The goddess reclines on the seat of king serpent. And her body is glowing with multitude of jewels and gems adorned by the hoods of the serpent. The halo of her limbs is like sun and the three rays are enhancing her beauty. In her hands she holds rosary, god skull and lotus. Her forehead is shining with grandeur of half moon dimension crown. So now let's get started with understanding the essence of sixth chapter slogans. So the sixth chapter, it's about the slaying of Dhoomra Lochana. Is one of the lead army members of Shumbanishumba. So this chapter has about twenty-four slogans. So the sage said, uh slaying of Dhoomra Lochana. A demon with smoky eyes, smoky eyes. In our life also, our eyes get covered with smoke, with fog. Because of which we see illusion, see all the problems and challenges. So imagine this story is about destroying your illusion of vision and may this. Uh slogans, meaning essence, destroy your obstacles to see the true essence. Hearing these words, the messenger was filled with rage. He came to the demon king and told everything with great exaggeration. The demon king was burning with anger and unable to control it, called his commander Dhoomra Lochana. And said, oh Dhoomra Lochana, go immediately to that wretch of a woman. And drag her through the hair by force to my feet. If there happens to be anybody, either a Gandharva or a Yaksha who may try to protect her, kill him instantaneously. The sage said, under the order of Shumba, the commander of the army started to the Himalayas. With sixty thousand of forces, well armed and protected. He saw the goddess there in the Himalayan mountains and said, move at once to the feet of Shumba and Nishumba. If you do not wish to come, I shall drag your chest of hair in my hand. The goddess replied, if you are the commander of Asura armies, if you are sent by the king to drag me by force. Then what can I do? The sage said, hearing these words of the goddess Dhoomra Lochana ran towards her in great fury. The goddess heaved a sound of hum, H U M, hum. From inside her and the Dhoomra Lochana was reduced into ashes in no time. She poured a rain of arrows on the demon army. And army and her lion fell on them, all like burning fire on a dried forest. The heads of the demons were cut off with axes. That showered from the Devi's hands and there was no end to the havoc caused to them by her vehicle, the lion. The lion drank the blood of Asuras who all were lying dead on the ground. In a moment, there was not a single demon to be seen in the whole army. This news reached to the ears of the king Shumba and his anger knew no bounds. He began to bite his lips and order his faithful colleagues, Chanda and Munda. Thus, oh Chanda and Munda, go there at once, collect a large army. Bring her to me, do not delay much. Quick, quick, drag her by her hair. Or tie her with ropes, or if possible, at least kill her in battle. Let her be destroyed in case there is no other go. By try if you can. Kill that lion which is so ferocious, then tie her and bring to me. Work dexterously. Here we come to the end of chapter six. Which called the slaying of Dhoomra Lochana. So share in the comments, could you feel or share in the comments, what is the sound that? Mother goddess made that sound and the Dhoomra Lochana got turned into ashes. What is the sound? What is the spelling of the sound? Everyone type in the comments. Yes, hum. If you see in many of our programs, especially those who attended Sound Healing Boot can be. Explain the importance of hum and radiating across each of the body part. And when we say hum, that vibrations goes and destroys the Dhoomra Lochana-like illusions in our path. So hum uh is also the sound of the throat chakra. How many of you remember that? Yeah, hum is also the sound of throat chakra, H A M. But here it's H U M, H U M. There can be small difference. So what I want all you to do is sit for a minute, chant hum. Remembering each of the body part one by one. Close your eyes. And as you chant hum, feel the vibrations of hum going into your head. Now as you chant hum, feel the vibrations of hum going into your hands. Now as you chant hum, feel the vibrations going into your chest and stomach. Now as you chant hum, feel the vibrations of hum. Going into your excretory organs, front and back. Now observe the spine, have the awareness over the spine. As you chant hum, feel the vibrations over your entire spine. As you chant hum, feel the vibrations over your entire upper body. As you chant, feel like intention like Dhoomra Lochana was destroyed into ashes. May this hum chant clear the cellular memory related to pains, discomforts. Or obstacles related to health, financial relationships. With hum chant, vibrate entire upper body. Be aware of the excretory organs, front and back. Be aware of your left leg, of your right leg and chant the sound. Be aware of your entire body, top to bottom, chant the sound. Repeat couple of more times, chant by yourself. And as you chant, feel the vibrance of the chant radiating across your body. And once you completed, share in the comments, how are you feeling after the hum chant? Can you feel the vibrations of hum and do you feel something releasing out from your body? Some lightness expanding, some heaviness coming down. Also, take if you have any pain or discomfort in the body, just close your eyes and be aware of the pain discomfort. And chant this sound hum, feel the hum vibrations going there and it is getting healed. So how many of you enjoyed the hum chant? Type in the comments, enjoy. Type in the comments, enjoy. So this hum chant in general also you can practice. Those who received the Nadaopasana course, we have. Explained how many more detailed, body part by part, we have radiated. So that you feel the vibrations in every cell. Very good. Enjoyed, loved it. I guess my camera uh battery couldn't handle the energy. The main camera battery finished. So switched on to the laptop camera. Good, thank you. Subba says, oh my god, felt something is forcibly going into my body. Enjoyed vibrations. Thank you for sharing. So okay, I need to make a habit to see this camera now. I was seeing the friend. So coming to the seventh chapter, let's begin with the meditation. Close your eyes, meditating on mother, the goddess, the higher power. I meditate upon the goddess Mathangi, the embodiment of mother. Sitting upon a throne of jewels, she is listening to the sweet sounds of parrots. The color of her body is dark, her one foot resting upon a lotus. She wears a half moon upon her head. Wearing a garland of flower buds, she plays the strings of a musical instrument, viena. She covers her body with a blouse and a red colored saree in her hands. In her hands is a cup made of a corn shell. From her face comes this slight sweet scent, which causes intoxication and a brilliant spot of vermilion shines on her forehead.” So this was the prayer and visualization of Mathangi. So now we are going to enter into beautiful chapter of taking the fight and the battle forward so that you all experience more deeper transformation within. So this chapter, it’s an interesting chapter and the name of the chapter, let’s see. The name of the chapter is “The Birth of Kali, Slaying of Chanda and Mundah.” Let me show Mother Kali’s photographs one. Let’s see, beautiful photographs are here. Okay, so this is the picture depicted about challenging Dhoom- Dhoomralochana. Then the birth of Mother Kali. So this is a small visual for all of you to visualize as I read the story of the birth of Mother Kali and destroying the army. Are you ready for destroying the evil within with the blessings of Mother Kali energy? Type in the comments, ready Mother Kali, ready Mother Kali. Okay, I had to show maybe vertical, I’m sorry. Yes, ready Mother Kali. Everyone type in the comments, ready Mother Kali. Thank you. Thank you everyone for your active participation. Thank you for sticking here and thank you for continuing in the session. Though it was announced to many people, you are some selected few set of people came here and ready to go through the process. So, the the story begins like this, the slokas begins like this. “As they had been commanded, the Deitias led by Chanda and Mundah formed a four-fold army and sailed forth, their weapons raised aloft. They saw the goddess smiling slightly, positioned on her lion atop the great golden peak of a mighty mountain. When they saw her, they made zealous effort to seize her, while other demons from the battle approached her with bows and swords drawn. Then Ambika became violently angry with her enemies, her face growing black as ink with rage. Suddenly there issued forth from between her eyebrows, Kali with protruding fangs, carrying a sword and a noose with a mortal skull topped staff, adorned with a necklace of human skulls, covered with tiger skin, gruesome with chewed flesh. Her mouth gaping wide, her lolling tongue terrifying, her eyes red and sun-skin, she filled the whole space with her howling. Attacking and killing the mighty demons, she devoured the armed forces of enemies of the gods. Seizing with one hand the elephants with their back riders, drivers, warriors and bells, she hurdled them into her maw. In the same way she stewed up warriors with her, with their horses, chariot and chariots, grinding them up most horribly with her teeth. One she grabbed by the hair of the head, another by the nape of the neck, another she trod underfoot, while yet another she crushed against her chest. There the mighty striking and throwing weapons loosed by those demons, she caught in their mouth, in her mouth and pulverished in fury. She ravaged the entire army of powerful evil soul Asuras. Some she devoured while others she trampled. Some were slain by the sword, other bashed by her skull topped club, while other demons went to paradise, crushed by the sharp points of her teeth. Seeing the sudden demise of the whole Deitya army, Chanda rushed to attack that most hurriedious goddess Kali. The great demon covered the terrible-eyed goddess with a shower of arrows, while Mundah hurdled, disgusted by the thousands. Caught in her mouth, those weapons shone like mired orbs of the sun entering into the belly of clouds. Then howling horribly, Kali laughed aloud mellowingly. Her mouth gaping wide, her fangs glittering awful to behold, astride her huge lion, the goddess rushed against Chanda. Grabbing his head by the hair, she decapitated him with her sword. When he saw Chanda dead, Mundah attacked. He threw him to the ground, stabbing him with her sword in rage. Seeing both Chanda and the mighty Mundah fell, remains of the army fled in all direction, overcame with fear. Grabbing the heads of the two demons, Kali approached Chandika and shrieked, crackling with fears, demonic laughter. “I offer you Chanda and Mundah as the great victims in the sacrifice of the battle. Now you yourself will kill Shumba and Nishumba.” Witnessing this presentation of the two great Asuras, the eminent Chandika stroked graciously to Kali. “Since you have captured Chanda and Mundah, you have brought them to me. Oh goddess, you will known as, you will be known as Chamunda.” So here we complete the healing process of the slaying of Chanda and Mundah of Devi Mahatma. So how could you, how did you feel the formation of Mother Kali? Share in the comments. So and could you feel this furious energy coming? And if you could visualize as a meditation this entire story, could you feel the furious energy coming and destroying the energy within? You are ready for Makali. May the merciful Mother Kali destroy all the evil evidences in us. So this is the slaying picture of Chanda and Mundah, just for your visual experience. So are you ready to take the destruction of negative energies more deeper? Yeah? So we have two pictures here, Sri Chamunda Devi, Mother Chamunda, with the two heads of Chanda and Mundah. Shuba says, can feel the power of Mother Kali. So in the next war, the collective charge of the divine energies, uh collective multiple form of divinity, mother goddess forms. So we don’t know if this really happened or not, does not matter. The point is you gain the essence, feel the story happening within and the army of goddesses are coming towards you now to destroy all the problems. So now let’s go to the next step of eighth chapter, where let’s experience the further clearing process. So this eighth chapter has more slokas now. It has about sixty slicks slokas almost. So the chapter’s name is called the Slaying of Rakta Bija, the Slaying of Rakta Bija. Remember many of you might have heard this story, how many our heads cut, the blood keep drowning and they used to multiply? And here it is the same, how much ever, whatever we focus on expands. If we focus on the problems or challenges, more problems or challenge expands. We discuss that, remember that concept? So here it’s a jugad approach of killing the challenge and holding on to it trickily so that the challenge does not expand further and containing it. So are you ready to slay the Rakta Bija within your system with the blessings of supreme almighty? Type in the comments, end of Rakta Bija. The chapter name is End of Rakta Bija. A demon of blood seed, demon of blood seed. Everyone type in the comments, end of Rakta Bija. So it’s already two hours passed, we have thirteen chapters. We are half the way. Let’s hope it completes earlier, maybe it takes couple of hours. Uh we are coming to the eighth chapter. So chapter eight, the meditation begins like this. “I meditate upon the embodiment of existence, who is equipped with the realization such as Anima. Anima means eight realizations are supposed to exist. Examples, Anima, Mahima, Lagima, Garima, Prapya, Prakamya, Ashwatha, Vasitva. Her body is red colored, eyes acute with compassionate emotions and her hands are adorned with noose, broad arrow and bow.” So let’s get the essence of killing of Rakta Bija. “So the saint Mehta further told the king and the trader, when the two of his surgeons, Chanda and Mundah got killed, their army reduced to powerlessness. Shumba, the demon king, could no more remain in peace. He ordered for unification of all the Deitya armies and said, “Now let all my warriors unite together with all their weapons and march against the lady in the Himalayas. Let my eighty-six commanders collect their armies of elephant riders and let the eighty-four thousand of their armies of chariots. Let the fifty croats of powerful fighters and the hundred sets of Dhoomra Raksas. Start now under my command. Let the armies of Ulakas, Dorhirdas, the Maurvas, the Kalakeyas, all the races of demon dynasty, among the Asuras, start for war against that of celestial, celestial women. Quick, quick!” Ordering thus, the terrible Shumba started with a large army, as if to approve the whole universe in his anger. Seeing an extraordinarily huge army approaching her, the deity covered up the whole earth and the sky with shower of arrows which made sight impossible, nothing was visible because of the shower of arrows. Her lion began to roar mightily as if at the time of destruction of the worlds, at the end of an age. The sounds of her weapons, arrows and roaring lion were still increased by the fearful sounds of Ambika’s bells, conches and thunderings. Hearing these sounds, the demons began to encircle Devi, her lion and Kali from all the sides. At this memorable time, for the purpose of the welfare of the world and the destruction of the evil, the powerful forces of Brahma, Vishnu, Shiva, Skanda and Indra entered the body of goddess Durga. Whichever is the form of the particular god, in the same form their energies began to challenge the demonic forces. As the energy of Brahma, Durga came with Kamandalu, riding upon a chariot yoked to swans. As the energy of Shiva, she came riding on a bull, holding a trident, wearing the moon and the snakes. As the energy of Skanda, she came riding on the Pika and with Shakti in her hand. As the energy of Vishnu, she came upon Garuda, the eagle, holding a conch, discus club, mace and sword in her hands. As the energy of Varaha, she arrived on a boar, on a pig. Nursing he, came in the same form of nursing the man lion, shaking the mane and as the energy of Indra, she appeared sitting on an elephant with the thunderbolt Vajra in her hand, adorned with thousand eyes. Then from the body of that goddess came out the great form of her own power, Chandika. She frightening the entire quarters. She came on the battlefront yelling like hundreds of jackals along with her messenger Ishana, the energy of Lord Shiva himself. She said to her, “Go and tell the demons that Indra should obtain the sacrificial offerings, that the demons should enter the hell if they want to live.” Sorry, let me repeat, “Go and tell the demons that Indra should obtain the sacrificial offerings, that demons should enter the hell if they want to live. If they wish to fight with me, let them come. I shall feed myself on their hot blood with joy.” Since she was sent with this message, Ishana is even now called Shiva Dutti. Dutti means Dutti or messenger of Shiva’s energy. Hearing the proud message of Kali, the demons filled with rage, ran towards Katiyani, the energy of Skanda, in order to put an end to her life. Deitias reigned upon Katiyani all sorts of weapons from all quarters, but Shri Katiyani showered upon them a more powerful rain of arrows and divine weapons. Whatever I’m explaining, please keep visualizing and as if purification is happening within, that’s more important. So but the Shri Katiyani showered upon them a more powerful rain of arrows and divine weapons, which obstructed the Asuras from operating their weapons and armors. Then Kali, with her invincible power, rushed through their armies like a forcible blast of turbulent wind, swept over thousands of devils and crushed them down feet with one sprinkle of holy water from the, from her Kamandalu. Kamandalu is celestial bowl. Brahmi observed all the strength of those demons. With the discus and tridents, number of demons she killed could not be enamored. With the thunderbolt and weaponry, she attacked the Deitias as an eagle over serpents. With the blow of her Vajra, the Deitias fell into thousands, vomiting blood and deprived of their heads and limbs. The discus of Vaishnavi destroyed innumerable host of satan armies and goddess Varahi tossed them with the tusk, haitha and taitha and tore them to death. In the form of Narasimha, she began to eat up the demons with a furious roaring. The ferocious roaring Dutis created by the gods began to play havoc in army and brutally devoured them and crushed them down. On seeing that the divine forces working the destruction of Asura army, Rakta Bija, their leader, came forth with arrogance and fury. From every drop of blood that fell from his body, there came out dreadful demons equal to his power and failure. Rakta Bija attacked Indrani with rage and threw upon her the deadly weapons. Indrani with her thunderbolt cut down the arms and there was a profuse bleeding from his body, which wetted the ground in red. Immediately there rose up thousands of Raksas, each equal to him in strength and cleverness. There cropped up so many Deitias in a battlefield. Each drop of the blood grew as a full demon. All these fought with the goddess from all quarters. Then again with a severe blow of Devi’s Vajra, when Rakta Bija’s head was fatally wounded, there was a stream of blood flowing on the ground. At once, thousands and thousands of demons emerged out of that to attack with all their might. At this, she broke the head of Rakta Bija with her mace. Now his blood gave birth to many, so many warriors, that the whole earth seems to be full of them. Then she tore his army, tore his body with her discus and again there was a stream of blood. Thousands of Deitias again cropped up. The whole earth was filled with these dreaded chants. The gods became extremely fearful when they saw the world full of demons. Those could not be killed by any means due to their infinite number. To see the gods dejected so much, the goddess told Kali to widen her mouth and spread her tongue. “Oh Kali, when I destroy these demons with my weapons, do not allow even single drop of blood to fall on the ground. Drink up all the blood with thy extensive tongue. Swallow all of them, then and there.” Saying thus the goddess, Swallow all of them, then and there. Saying thus, the goddess pierced Rakta Bija with her trident. Kali spread her gaping mouth and drank up the blood of Assura. Pained by the harsh trident, Rakta Bija roared, his last and fell upon earth with great fears. Devi put an end to his life with her chakra discus and again, there was a flow of blood from his body. Kali swallowed and the the created demons and drank her blood. In the end, the bloodless demon Rakta Bija fell on the ground like a mountain and the earth trembled. All the gods were full of joy. The celestial dismissal sang, danced and rejoiced. Here we come with this explanation of the end of Rakta Bija. Type in the comments, end of Rakta Bija everyone, end of Rakta Bija. End of Rakta Bija. How many of you felt something goosebumps and defeating getting destroyed in your system? Could you feel it? Ha ha. End of Rakta Bija. Yes, mind blowing, felt thunderstorm power. Very good, very good. Yes, end of Rakta Bija. Share in the comments, is this story is inspiring? Are you ready for more? Okay, so as we proceed further, let's come to the interesting part of Slaying of Nishumbha. Melina says, feeling goosebumps. Swati is saying, truly inspiring. I have good many photographs of year of mother goddess. Don't know which to show, so better not to show. Ha ha ha. Okay. Such beautiful description of various forms of mother. So just give me a minute, I'll fill in my mug with some hot water. My throat is going down every chapter little bit. Everyone bless my throat for able to read more fluently for next four chapters. Never read four chapters, this many chapters constantly. It's fun. Great. Thank you everyone for sticking by. This is fun to have you all. Hmm. Swati says hum. Through hum, my throat clears. Ha ha ha. Thank you. So now let's enter into the ninth chapter. Chiranjeevi says, feeling negativity is removing far from away. Pramila says, felt Rakta Bija like our thoughts. Absolutely, we have thousands of thoughts. Every negative thought we try to fight, more negative thoughts come. Beautifully says Pramila. So what you focus on expands. So instead of fighting with the negative thoughts, welcome the negative thoughts. They will get diluted. That's the powerful technique. Instead of fighting the negative thoughts and rejecting them, opposing them, that I don't want these negative thoughts. The more you think, the more negative thoughts will increase. Instead of that, all you need to do is welcome the negative thought and soon it will start dilating. Okay, and imbibe within. Remove all the illusions and clear picture of truth. Good. So coming to the chapter nine. Chapter nine, it's about death of Nishumbha, brother of Shumbha. Let's go through the meditation and small prayer if you would like to close eyes and listen to. It says, I take refuge in the supremely divided one, the Lord who is both male and female, continuously without end. Her color is like flowers. Her excellent gold with red and yellow mixture. In her beautiful hands, she holds a rosary, a net and curves sword and shows the mudra giving blessings. The radiant half moon is her ornament and she has three eyes. So let's begin this summary, the death of Nishumbha. The king said, oh sage, wonderful is the story of the killing of demons Rakta Bija. Wonderful is the glory of the great goddess. Now I wish to hear further, what the very rate Shumba and Nishumba did after the death of Rakta Bija. The sage told that when the king and his brother heard the destruction of their army and that Rakta Bija was slain, both the brothers flew into unborn wrath. Nishumba then rushed forward along with the chief of forces of demons, resolved for the purpose, all enraged and biting their lips in anger. Shumba also mighty invoker came forward. From all the ten quarters, the demon army tossed the goddess with poisonous weapons and invincible missiles. Shumba and Nishumba, like two thunder clouds, rained a tempestous shower of arrows on the various manifestation, the forms of goddess, appearing as Kali, Vaishnavi, Raudri, Brahmi, Narasinghi and like described in the last chapter. The goddess Chandika gave a befitting reply. There began a memorable battle. Wonderful was the fight, wonderful and dreadful. The gods began to tremble to see the sky covered with clouds of arrows. Those hurdle arrows were immediately cut in fight by the mass of arrows from the bow of the goddess and with multitude of other weapons. She smote the two demon kings on the limbs. Nishumba grasping a sharp sword and a shining shield struck the lion on the head. The goddess quickly cut his superb sword with a sharp edged arrow and also his shield on which eight moons were figured. Then the demons hurdled his spear, the goddess split into two by her disgust. Similarly, he tried many weapons to kill the goddess but failed. Finally, the goddess assailed the heroic demon, advancing with battled axe in his hand and laid him low on the ground. Seeing his brother laying on the ground, Shumba came forward, sitting on a chariot and grasping excellent weapons in his long and incomparable eight arms. He shone by pervading the entire sky. Now the great goddess Chandika blew her conch, made a twang of her bowstring, that filled the whole atmosphere with a dreadful sound. The ringing of her bell filled in all directions to demoralize the strength of all demon army. The lion filled the heaven, the earth and ten quarters of the sky with the loud roars, which made even elephants give up their wild and threat. Goddess Kali jumped upwards in the sky, came down and struck the earth with such a great force that its furious sound swallowed up all other previous sounds. Shiva Dutti made a loud ominous peal of laughter. The demon army were frightened and Shumba flew into an utmost rage. As the goddess Ambika challenged him saying, wait, wait, stop and stand there. The god stationed in the sky cheered her, Jai Ho, Jai Ho, be victorious. On the other hand, the heroic battles cries of Shumba filled the entire space. Thousands and lacs and then crores of arrows and missiles weapons. Missile weapons were shot at the goddess Ambika. The goddess in retaliation smote him with a trident, pierced him in the chest. Wounded therewith, he fainted and fell to the ground. By this time, Nishumba regaining consciousness, seized his bow and shot the arrows towards the goddess with the goddess and the lion. He covered the goddess with myrrh discus. Those were split into the pieces with the arrows shot by the goddess herself. Therefore, Nishumba tried to attack the goddess with different weapons like sword, club and dart etcetera. And rage Chandika pierced his chest with swiftly hurdled dart. Therefrom the split chest came forth a furious demon challenging the goddess. Then the goddess laughing aloud, severed the head of that demon which was issuing forth from the chest with a sharp stroke of her sword. Thereupon, Nishumba fell to the ground. The lion devoured those demons whose necks were crushed with his fierce teeth. Some were nicely chewed by the jaws of Kali, some were cut in twain by Kaumari. Some were enchanted by sprinkling purified water from the Kamandal of Brahmi. Some fell pierced by the trident wielded by Maheshwari. Some were laid on the ground by the blows from the snot of Varahi. Some demons were cut into pieces by the discus of Vaishnavi. And yet some others were perished by the thunderbolt discharged by Aendri. Remaining demons fled from the battle or eaten by Kali Shiva Dutti and the lion of great goddess. Here we come to the end of ninth chapter called Slaying of Nishumbha of Devi Mahatmaya of Markandaya Purana. So, everyone type in the comments, end of Nishumbha, end of Nishumbha. Could you, how could you, how, did you enjoy the rage and the fight? How was the experience? End of Nishumbha. Let's celebrate it. End of Nishumbha. Ha ha ha. Yes, end of Nishumbha. Claps for that, claps for that. End of Nishumbha in your life as well. Ha ha. Thank you. Now, as the end of Nishumbha happened, yes, Pramila and everyone giving claps, 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 claps. Time for next, next destruction. The Shumba is coming on the way. Shumba says, picture Abhi Baki here. So the next chapter name is Slaying of Shumba. Ha ha. So the tenth chapter, let's meditate with the shloka, with the goddess, close your eyes. With the fearlessness of, with the fullness of my heart, I think of the female lord of all, Kamaishwari, the ruler of desire, who unites the intrinsic nature of Shiva and Shakti, of the consciousness and energy, who wears the radiant half moon on her head. Her luster is as beautiful as excellent gold. The sun, moon and the fire are here, her three eyes. And in her lovely hands, she holds a bow and arrow, curved sword, net and spear. So, are you ready to end this Shumba? Type in the comments, end of Shumba, end of Shumba. End of Shumba. Slaying of Shumba. You can say, ready to slay Shumba. Ready to slay Shumba in your life. So the final battle and the slaying of Shumba. The learned slain saint Rishi Mehta so spoke to the king. Seeing his brother Nishumba slain, who was dear to him, has his own life and his army being slaughtered. Shumba angrily said, oh Durga, you are puffed up with pride of strength, but it is not so because you are restoring to the help of other women. I challenge you alone. The goddess replied, I am all alone in the world here. Who else is there besides me? Thinking in the oneness perspective, who you are, who your brother sister are, who your parents are, who your family members are, who all are typing in the comments, are all the same, essence is the same, isn't it so? Mother goddess, the supreme almighty, essence is the same. Look, oh wicked ones, these goddesses are the manifestation of my own powers. Now I stand alone. You also be steadfast in the combat, then all those Brahmani and other goddesses were absorbed in her body. Then began a dreadful battle between the goddess and demon Shumba. While all the gods and demons looked on, with showers of arrows, with sharp weapons, frightful missiles, both engaged in such a combat that frightened all the worlds. The lord of demons repulsed and broke the divine missiles discharged by Ambika in hundreds and attacked with his own excellent missiles. But the great goddess playfully destroyed those weapons merely by the fear shot of hum. Hum, H U M, hum. The demon covered the goddess by showering hands, hundreds of arrows. Now the demon took up his spear, but the goddess split that spear by throwing discus and then and there. Next, the supreme monarch of demons, holding a sword bright like a sun and shining shield bearing the images of hundreds of moons, rushed towards the goddess. Just as he was rushing forward, Chandika cut off his sword and the shining shield with the sharp arrows shot from her bow. Horses and chariots killed, the bow broken, sword and shield lost. The demon grasped a dangerous maze to kill her. That maze was also destroyed. Even then, he did not lose courage and attacked the goddess with his fist, down on her heart. On that, the goddess Ambika smote him on his chest with her palm. The demon fell on the earth, but immediately, he rose up again seizing the goddess. He sprang up and mounted high into the sky. There also Chandika waged a battle with him without any support. At that time, the demon lord, Shumba and the goddess Chandika fought as never before, with each other in the sky in close contact. The saints and seers were astonished to see this fight. The struggle went on for a long time and ultimately Chandika lifted him up, whaled him around and flung him down on the earth. That evil nature demon again rushed to kill the goddess rising along his fist. But this time, the goddess pierced his chest with trident. Shumba, the lord of demons, fell lifeless on the ground, shaking the entire earth, all seas, islands and mountains. When that evil natured Shumba was slain, whole world were pleased. The sky appeared clean and perfect peace was regained. Illumens like the flaming of potent clouds and the shedding of stars and heavenly bodies were set aside. The rivers attained their natural flow. The gods rejoiced and the celestial minstrels sang melodiously and played musical instruments. The dammiesels started dancing, favorable winds blew and the sun shined radiantly above. The sacred fires blazed as normal fearful sound stopped. Peace prevailed everywhere. Here we come to the end of tenth chapter, Slaying of Shumba. Everyone type, end of all problems, end of all enemies or end of all evils. May the destruction of all the challenges and problems happen in your life. Clap for that celebration for end of all challenges or evils in your life. Ha ha. Yes, end of all problems, end of. How many of you are feeling a sense of happiness and sense of victory coming from within for no reason? Yeah? Feeling elated, feeling happy, good. Yes, happiness coming. End of all problems, challenges and enemies. Three more chapters to go. Good. So the next chapter, the eleventh chapter, let's see what the title says. The next chapter is hymns of hymns to Narani. Hymns to Narani means prayer to mother goddess. So this is a kind of surrender in a prayer. Whenever you feel challenges or problems, practice the art of surrender in us. And this prayer will help you to experience the surrender in us feeling within. Okay? So let's meditate with small shloka. Okay, close your eyes. The brilliance of her body is like rising sun, the moon is crowned upon her forehead. Her swelling breasts overflow, her three eyes are in union. Upon her face shines a radiant smile. Her hands show the posture of granting boons. The prod, the fetter, the net and the posture of fearlessness. I meditate on the goddess Bhuvaneshwari, the ruler of earth. Very good. So I see in the comments, the celebrations of end of all challenges, Jeet Gaye. Who is Shumba? There are two main evils, Shumba and Nishumba because of whom this actual battle begin. Shumba and Nishumba wanted goddess, so they sent armies one by one. Then first Nishumba, his brother died, then Shumba, the main, uh, the main evil died. Okay, so let's begin the chapter eleven. The Rishi told the king that when the great demon was slain by the goddess. Indra and other gods led by the god of fire came to her with their faces full of cheer. Praise the goddess with all these words. Oh goddess, who removes the suffering of your supplicants, have mercy. Oh mother of whole world, be gracious. Oh mistress of the universe, protect the world, have mercy. You are the mistress of all that moves and moves not. You alone are the foundation of the world residing in the form of earth. Oh you whose prowess is unsurpassed. You nourish the world in the form of the waters. You are the power of Vishu, endless energy. You are the supreme seed of the universe. Oh goddess, this world is deluded by your illusion. When gracious, you are the cause of release on earth. Oh goddess, all the sciences reside in you. You are all women and you are all the world. By you alone as mother is this world filled. How can we praise you? Who are yourself the praise worthy expression of the high and low? Praise be to you, Narayani, whose hands and feet are everywhere. With heads and faces and eyes in all directions, who watches and listens on all sides. Oh mistress of the universe, whose nature is the world filled with all prayers. Save us from danger. Oh goddess Durga, praise to be to you. Praise be to you Kathyaani with kindly face. Oh three eyed goddess, protect us from our fear. Praise be to you Badrakali. May your horrendous trident with points of flame, destroyer of all demons, guard us from danger. May your bell that inhales the glory of Deityas when it fills the world with sounds. Protect us from the evil as your sons. Smear with the mead of demon blood and fat ablaze with rays. May your sword be auspicious. Oh Chandika, be bow to you. Be gracious to those who are prostrated before you. Oh goddess, who removes the suffering of the world worthy of worship. From those who inhabit the triple worlds, bestow boons upon these worlds. The goddess said, I am the giver of boons, oh gods, ask from me any boon. So time is for all of you, ask any boon at this time of the reading of slokas and meaning, what you want in your life. I shall give you, I am the giver of boons, oh gods, ask from me any boon, I shall give that to you. The god said, oh goddess, you have done everything, may our enemies be destroyed always. The goddess said, in the. In the Veivasvata Manmantra, in the twenty eighth Vapara age, I shall be born in the house of. Cowherd, Nanda and Yashoda's womb and destroyed Shumba and Nishumba once more. Who will be born again as my enemies in the Vindhyam Mountains. Means it's the prediction of birth of Lord Krishna and the killing of Kansa and. Uh, I'm not able to remember the one more person, yeah? I will have my abode in the Vindhyam Mountains and destroy them there. I will take a dreadful form and kill all the wicked minded demons. I will eat them up and kill all the wicked minded demons. I will eat them up and drink their blood. Thereby my teeth will become red like pomegranate and I will be called by gods and men as. Rakta Dan, Rakta Dantika, the red-toothed Rakta Dantika. Again I shall be invoked by wise men. Rishis, when there will be a great famine everywhere and the earth will be without rain for hundreds of years. I will be there be born in order to relieve their distress. I will look at them with hundred eyes and they will name me as Shatakshi, hundred hide. I will then fill the bellies of the whole world with vegetables and food. Then I shall be called Shakambhari, she who nourishes upon vegetables. Then only I shall destroy demon called Durgama, then I will be called Durga Devi. Once again, when I shall assume a terrible form in the Himalayas. And devour demons for the purpose of protecting the Rishis. I shall be called as Bhima Devi, the terrible. When a demon called Aruna will begin to torment the people of the world, I shall take the form of innumerable beast and destroy him. Hence I will be worshipped as Brahmari. In this manner, whenever there is trouble anywhere. Whenever there is cropping up of demons and then and there I shall manifest myself. And bring peace to earth. So everyone type in the comments. Thank you for, for blessing us with all our wish manifestation. Or thank you all God for blessing us with clearing all the challenges or obstacles of life. Once you do for yourself, then type in the comments, I bless everyone in this world. With the blessings of the god, all the goals manifest. I bless everyone in the world with the blessings of the god, all the obstacles may clear. Yes, thank you, advance gratitude. Thank you God for clearing obstacles of life. Thank you God for manifesting our goals. Thank you God for manifesting our wishes. And as everyone is typing in, soak in the power of blessings of flood coming from everyone. Let's take a five, seven minutes break. It's eight thirty eight right now. Let's resume it, eight forty five, last two chapters to go. Everyone keep typing the blessings, then take the break. If you want to sit and soaking the blessings, keep soaking everyone comments. Okay, thank you everyone for joining back. So is this conversation and perspective useful for you? Are you enjoying the essence? Share in the comments, what is your key takeaway? And is this conversation even useful? Listening to the story isn't even triggering something within? Can you feel some shifts? My previous camera is back. Can you can see the difference in the quality? Okay, thank you everyone for blessing in the comments to each other that their goals manifest and thank you for. Uh, blessing yourself, thank you for practicing the advanced gratitude. And thank you for thanking each other. Thank you for sticking till this point. Yeah, thank you Devi Ma for the blessings. Good. So are you ready for the chapter twelve? Are you ready for the chapter twelve now? Type in the comments, ready for chapter twelve, ready for chapter twelve. So are you ready for chapter twelve? Type in the comments, ready for chapter twelve. Thank you, thank you for being here. So let's get started with reading of the meditation and experiencing it, assensing it within our system. I meditate upon the three eyed Durga Devi. The luster of her limbs is like lightning. She appears fierce riding the shoulder of line. Many maids holding shield and double edged sword in hand are standing in her service. In her hands she has gay discus club. Double edged sword, shield, arrow, bow, net. Her one hand in the meditative posture, connecting the thumb and the pointing finger. Her intrinsic nature is like burning fire and her forehead is like decorated by crescent crown. So let's begin the twelfth chapter with a beautiful conversation and explanation. So here we go, the essence, the slokas. So the summary, it's like a purana hoti type. Where the actual essence of entire summary is shared and the benefits of going through that is shared. Now is a very important time, listen to this carefully and imbibe this importance essence within your system, okay? Are you ready? Type in the comments, ready? This is one of the important chapters, the importance of reciting the Shidurba, Durga Sabthasati. And eulogy of merits. What all you can receive just by chanting these mantras. And let's have the intention, whatever merits have been mentioned here, may that manifest in our life. And may that manifest in your family members' life, may that manifest in everyone's life. The importance of reciting Shidurga Sabthasati and eulogy of merits. After granting the boons and assuring the gods that whatever trouble arises due to the advent of evil forces. She will incarnate and destroy them. The goddess said, whoever will recite these hymns of praise to me with concentration as uttered by the gods. I shall put an end to his troubles undoubtedly. And those who shall allow the narration of the destruction of demons like Madhu and Kaitab. Mahisha, Shum and Nishum and others. And those who shall listen to my glorious feats on eight, fourteenth and ninth days of lunar fourth night. Will be saved from inauspicious evil. will be saved from inauspicious events and misfortunes. You all are saved. To them nothing bad may occur. Neither poverty will arise nor separation from the beloved ones. They may not experience fear from enemies or from robbers or the prosecution by kings or from weapons, fire and flood. Hence this poem of my greatness must be chanted with concentration and devotion. It is the supreme course of well-being. May this poem of my glories quell epidemic calamities as also threefold agonies, the physical, mental and natural pains. I shall never forsake the place where there is narration is well recited. During worship in the fire ceremony, the haven, when sacrifice is offered and at great festive occasion, all these verses on my feats must be chanted and listened to. During autumnal seasons when the great annual worship is performed, the person hearing this glorification of mine with devotion shall be liberated from all the troubles and blessed with wealth, food and children. Hearing the feats of my powers prowess in the battles, a man becomes fearless. Let my glories be heard everywhere in functions of peace upon seeing a bad dream or to elevate the adverse effect of positions of the planets. Troubles subside as well as the afflicting influences of planets. It also pacifies children affected by the existing of adverse planetary influences. It may cause the best promoter of friendship among divined societies. The demons, goblins and ogres are destroyed by mere chanting these verses of Durga Sapthisati. This entire glorification of mine draws a devotee very near to me and by means of finest cattle, flowers, argia and incense and by perfumes and lamps, by feeding wise men, ablations, by sprinkling water, by various other offerings and gifts if one worships the day and night in a year. The gratification which is done to me is attained by listening. But one said to this holy story of mine. The chanting and hearing of the story of my manifestation removes sins and grant perfect health and protect one from evil spirits. And when my marriage shall exploit in the form of slaughter of the vikya daityas is listened to, men will have no fear from enemies and the hymns uttered by you and those by the divine sages and those by Brahma bestow a pious mind. Anyone who is lost or on a lonesome spot in a forest or is surrounded by the forest fire or who is surrounded by robbers in the desolate spot or who is captured by enemies or who is pursued by a lion or a tiger or by wild elephants in a forest or who under the orders of wrathful king is sentenced to death or has been imprisoned or who is tossed about in his boat by the tempest in the vast sea or who is in the most terrible battle under the shower of weapons or who is amidst of all kinds of dreadful troubles or is afflicted with pain. Such a man remembering the story of mine is saved from his trait. Through my power, lions etcetera, robbers and enemies flee from a distance and from him who remembers the story of mine. The learned saint of Medha further told in such a way than does the divine goddess although eternal takes birth again and again to protect creation. This world is deluded by her. It is begotten by her. It is she who gives the knowledge and bread and the prosperity when pleased. By Mahakali in this entire egg of Brahma provided lot of men at the awful time of dissolution, she takes form of Mahamari, the epidemic calamity, the great destructress of the world. She sustains the creatures in times. As Lakshmi or good fortune, she bestows wealth on men's homes in times of prosperity. In times of disaster, she appears as misfortune for the annihilation. When the goddess is prayed and worshipped with flowers, incense, perfume and other gifts, she provides wealth, sons, a mindset upon righteousness and happiness to all mankind. Here we end the 12th chapter which is the eulogy of merits of Devi Mahatmy. Everyone type in the comments. Thank you goddess, thank you Supreme for blessing me with all boons. Thank you for blessing me with all boons. How many of you while reading your feeling as you are literally feel blessed and you are feeling happy, happy within? How many of you can feel that? Type in the comments me or what are you feeling? Can you feel a sense of hope and confidence? So this YouTube video of this session, we are yet to go with one more chapter. This recording will be available here. Whenever you face challenges or problems in your life, go through this recording again. Watch in 1x 2x speed so that you can go through that in one, one and a half hour itself. And essence remember the stories again and again. Then you will be blessed more and more again and again. Yes, feeling truly blessed to listen this. Very good. Thank you goddess for all your blessings. Beautiful. This was an important chapter. If your friends or colleagues attended in the morning, tell them to fast forward to this point. Almost we started at six, so almost at two hours fifty minutes this forward this and listen to the 12th chapter. I guess I had to read 12th chapter in the first so that people stayed till the end. Feeling the blessings. Thank you Devi Ma, yes, thank you Devi Ma. Okay, we are coming to the last chapter, chapter 13, the ending of the Durga Sapthisati slogans. So the last chapter is again bestowing of boons to the king and the merchant. So listening to this, what kind of changes happening to the king and the merchant who began listening to the story? Let's understand yeah. So let's begin with a small meditation slogan. You can close your eyes or you can just open an experience. Okay, I have to see this this camera now. The beauty comparable to the surroundings of sunrise. With four hands and the three eyes, holding net, broad and curved sword, one hand with posture granting boon and fearlessness, I meditate the goddess Shivaya, the energy of infinite goodness. So let's begin by reading the essence of this chapter. Bestowing of the boons to the king and the merchant. The learned saint Rishi Mayadhya told the king and merchant to worship the all pervading goddess because she is endowed with such a majestic power to uphold the universe. She is the elusive power of Lord Vishnu and the world is deluded by her in every age. Therefore, one should take refuge in her because she is the giver of pleasure, heavenly bliss and liberation. Markandeya said. Hearing such words, the king Suratha was very much moved at heart and set forth to practice a disciplined meditation. The merchant also followed him. They both stationed themselves on the sand bank of river while reciting Devi Sukta, the verses of praise of the goddess continuously. They prepared an earthen image of goddess on the river sand. That image was worshiped with flowers, incense, fire and libation of water. They both remained on fast for the most part while practicing their rigorous penance for fulfilling full long three years. Offering sacrifices sprinkled with their own blood. Being pleased with their worship, the great goddess Chandika appeared before them and asked for a boon. The king asked that he should get back his lost kingdom undaunted by enemies even for the future progeny. But the merchant asked from her only wisdom to remove the attachment in the worldly objects. The goddess said, oh king, very shortly you will regain your lost kingdom. Okay, so I'll ask your wish and feel as if goddess is saying your boon is granted. The goddess said, oh king, very shortly you will regain your lost kingdom by conquering your enemies and rule over the land happily. After death, you will take birth from the essence of the sun, the god of universal light and will become the eighth Manu. You will be called the Savarni, the person who belongs to all castes. Oh merchant samadhi, I grant you the boon which you have desired. You will attain knowledge to enable you to gain highest wisdom for self-realization. Markandeya said in this manner, the goddess granted to both of them the cherished boons and disappeared. Hence the king Suratha, the foremost in the warrior caste Kshatriya will be born through the god of sun, god's son as the coming eighth Manu called Savarni. Thus is the glorious story of the great goddess, the mother of universe. And here we come to the end of the 13th chapter, 700 verses of Durga Satvati. So congratulations everyone for staying till the end and ending the reading. Everyone type in the comments. Thank you mother for blessing us with our boons. Thank you for blessing us with our goals. Thank you for manifesting our wishes. And it's okay to ask wishes, yeah? When you are happy then only you can progress in your life. So thank you everyone. So one last quotation is here. The water and its bubbles are one. The water and its bubbles are same one. The bubble has its birth in the water, floats on it and ultimately it's resolved into it. So also the individual, the Asjivatma and the supreme spirit Perma Atma are one and the same. The difference is in degree, the one is independent, the other. So the difference in the degree is one is dependent and other is independent. Sri Ramakrishna. So here we come to the end of Sri Durga Sapthisati. Thank you everyone, congratulations for being here and developing happy harmonious genes. May your all wishes and boons come into reality. And I hope this has been of value to you. Recording of this is available here itself in the YouTube. Do watch it again and again. If you are here for the first time, do hit the subscribe and like button of this video so that you are updated and notified the future sessions. And we have our master class and sound healing, the link of this is in the description. We are not part of the community. So thank you everyone for being part of this session. Share your one key takeaway and one key action plan. One key takeaway and one key action plan as a sadhana. As king as well as the other person merchant did sadhana for three years consistently, then God manifested and presented the boons. You are also equipped with various tools like aura healing, chakra healing and manifestation techniques. Declare something about your healing meditation or spiritual practices towards which you respectfully be regular. Declare it here so that the collective energy will make it happen. And as you keep practicing that on daily basis, may your wishes come into reality faster. So let me read some comments in the meantime. As everyone share in the comments, you are one declaration. Sheila, thank you me, thank you Sheila, thank you very much for your lovely words. Thank you Ravindra. Thank you Sneha. Thank you for the wonderful session, thank you everyone. Vedic Vip says will work on myself consistently. What way will you work on yourself? Be specific, be clear and how many minutes daily? What is consistency mean to you? So fortunate to hear you sir about various forms of goddess and reasons. Thank you everyone, thank you. I am practicing Brahmanurth meditation for 21 days. Good declaration, Swarupa, beautiful. I will continue my healing practices. Key takeaway to overcome fears and ego and move forward with goddess energy. Goddess energy or god energy or supreme almighty, whatever, something which is beyond us. Saying that what is beyond and what is me is the same. Like water and bubbles are different but still the same, you are the same. And taking that support and concentrating with that higher power support be in that essence most of the time. Thank you, thank you everyone for sharing your gratitude. Practicing Namajapa. Anupama to launch my startup with full confidence on 15th May. Best wishes Anupama. I will do aura healing and chakra healing consistently for half an hour every day. Very good. Thank you so much. We'll practice healing in meditation at least five days a week. Very good Sheila, that's a very beautiful type of goal setting. Not saying every seven days consistently, 24 hours consistently, five days a week is a clear picture. Beautiful. Will march forward and all with confidence and success. Pritika Chari, thank you for stating, starting this month with this. I experienced tremendous energy. Will work on my regular morning routine for one hour daily. Thank you, thank you very much. Best wishes. Thank you very much. Wow, many tons of comments. I manifest money and months related to abundance, okay? Goal is to expand client base in astrology consultancy and focus on healing regularly. My improving relationships. Great sir, thank you for joining. If you are part of our Discord group or WhatsApp groups, share your experience there so that those who missed out, read it, get inspired and go through this recording. And wishing you all a very happy Navratri. May you have awesome year ahead. As per Navratri and the day one, it was Ugadi, new year for many cultures. May this year now onwards be an awesome one. The financial year is coming to an end. New financial year is beginning. Let's have an awesome financial year, awesome growth of progress in all dimensions of life. Wishing you best of luck and take care. See you soon sometime next week or sometime soon. Bye bye.